I prepared a long notice of violation for that two Duffy. And Doug came by, picked it up, we mailed one out. I talked to the attorney in the bank that started a foreclosure action. She pulled up her file. They abandoned the foreclosure action. My suspicion, hers as well, was that somebody sent some wreck to the property, saw what they looked like and said, "We don't want it, so we're not going to complete the foreclosure." So, we're going to do that, and then we'll do the citation.
We'll see if he calls it in.
What are you going to want to do? Are you going to want to get him to comply with his status? We can take it. And then they're adjusting.
Fifteen grand. But I'm thinking we're going to get some pressure to.
Is Blight adjusted?
That's what she wanted.
I think we're done here, sir. Probably someday, maybe, we'll talk about that. Dispensary duty, and if committed there.
I'm going to find out, because I'm going to be in the budget. I'm going to be recommended twenty or so thousand dollars for parking Blight. You know, or down somewhere. Just I don't know. I refer to it as more of a scout to go out and do things.
Do a little bit and don't turn on.
Have been to taxes every year?
Yeah. Just nip one down with our lease company.
Cal business.
Counselor's side is what they're doing. Why can't you make a priority already?
Everybody ready? You ready?
Well, you may want to talk to them.
Welcome to the City of Manistee. Council meeting Tuesday, November 20th. Mr. Goodspeed, would you please lead us in the front row?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cooper? Mayor Pro Tem Beaton? Here. Mayor Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City assessor?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Public safety director, no. Um, city engineer?
Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comment on agenda-related items. Do we have any citizens who'd like to make comments on agenda-related items? Seeing none. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to request that we remove item 9B, notification regarding next work session, from the consent agenda.
We'll remove item 9B, and we'll talk about it at the end. We'll add it to the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented, removing 9B.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of establishing a 2019 poverty exemption guideline for new and new federal income guidelines as approved by the state tax commission. The adoption of a resolution establishing poverty exemption guidelines for exemption of property tax contributions is required in order for the board of review to grant poverty exceptions. The homestead of persons who the board of review determines by reason of poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemptions in whole or in part from taxation under Public Act 390, 1994. The state tax commission requires that the City of Manistee adopt this resolution every year and approve the income guidelines adopted by the state tax commission. The resolution states we use the federal income guidelines, and is substantially the same as last year's resolution. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution establishing 2019 poverty exemption rule guidelines.
I make a motion that we accept the establishing of 2019 poverty exemption.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration for establishing an alternative starting date for the 2019 March Board of Review. The city assessor is requesting council consideration of a resolution establishing alternative date for the first session of the 2019 March Board of Review. Last year, we held the Board of Review on Monday and the following Thursday. The assessor proposes to hold the first public meeting of the March 2019 Board of Review on Wednesday, March 13th, and Thursday, March 14th. This is allowed under the Public Act 194 of 2003 under the Michigan Complied Law. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution establishing an alternative 2019 March Board of Review first public meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. A report from the Harbor Commission. At a regular, a regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, department. At this time, Mr. Cook will report on the activities of the Harbor Commission and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their, no action required on this item.
Before I start, I've been a sailor on the Great Lakes for over sixty years now. And I want to, if none of you have had the experience of visiting various harbors, the uniqueness of entering the channel into the City of Manistee is alone in my remembrance of the harbors veiled by us, Lake Huron, Lake Erie, Lake Michigan. There's nothing like Manistee and the approach to the city. The potential of this harbor is boundless. As a Harbor Commission member, my highest priority is to do the best that we can to promote the marina for the benefits that it will have for local sailors and for the City of Manistee and surrounding area. So, anyway, that being aside, I'm Ty Cook, Chair of the Board. I'm pleased to be here this evening representing my fellow commissioners Glenn, Alex Fritz, and new member Tom, and our harbor master, Tim Kozel. Our thanks to Jim and Roger for the many valuable contributions they made while commissioners, and to Cindy Lokovich, who keeps our meetings on track and the results understandable. As you all know, the marina's 18th season was to be defined prior to its opening by the SEDCH. The April 14 event caused serious widespread damage to the marina's infrastructure, resulting in the loss of over fifty percent of our 36 slip dockage capability. On many occasions through the season, some of our visiting boaters were forced to seek transient slips at other facilities in the area, and there's no way to quantify the number of those who may have changed their cruising itineraries to exclude a planned visit to Manistee. Since the session continuing to days and weeks, the city staff and the engineers have been engaged in the process of determining the viability of the marina's remaining infrastructure, designing and estimating the cost of replacement dockage, and engaging in negotiation with the city's insurer while completing the necessary repairs needed to facilitate the season opening. The marina's coverage, less than deductible, will be total cover the costs expended to bring the marina's fuel dock kiosk back to a safe, serviceable condition, totally gutting and refurbishing costs of $5,000. The repair, reconstruction, replacement costs of the other damage, as well as the loss of income the marina experienced through the 18th season. In spite of the season's many challenges, our marina's manager, Laura Brennan, and her courteous, capable, and well-trained staff continued to receive universal accolades from our visiting boaters. We have cards that are handed out and voluntarily filled in by visiting boaters, and those comments about the marina and the staff are always at the very top. The remaining serviceable docks are all in need of repair and replacement. Additionally, as a result of Lake Michigan's increasingly high water levels, the usability of many of these remaining docks is occasionally in question, as they may be partially covered with clutter. The city has applied for and qualified for grants from the Manistee Community Foundation. However, no grant was awarded this year because we were found on the list and the money ran out. The city will reapply next year. Should those funds become available and awarded, it will be used to apply for matching funds from Waterway Commission. The money is to be used to finance and repair, replacement of the remaining docks. The schedule of the SEDCH repairs is to be completed prior to the opening of May 15th. After that, we cannot schedule that because it all depends on how the grant funding works out. The Facebook administrator, Frank Post, and my lovely wife continue to make posts to the page as well as monitor the activities and responses of the followers, the number of which, by the way, has grown from fifteen hundred in December of '16 to more than three thousand, and our thanks are thanks to those two. Increasing both transient and seasonal revenues is necessary to reduce the revenue shortfall as the revenues generated by the marina's operation continue to be disappointing. Overall, were it not for the debt service, the annual principal plus interest payments, our operational revenues would put us near a break-even level. The marina's 1819 budget anticipates the marina's revenue of $173,000 to be $8,000 short of the marina's operational cost of $181,000. I hope my numbers are fairly close. When the $63,000 debt service is added in, the shortfall grows to $71,000. Break-even would require an additional twelve boat days at each of the thirty-six slips. During our last operational season of 2017, with some slips used for seasonals, the marina experienced a transient occupancy rate of about thirty percent. The low rates in the early spring and late fall were less than fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent. August, July and August were in the forties, so we're operating far, far below our capables. To generate, anywhere, hmm. In recent seasons, the average transient boat size was thirty-eight feet, and the average length of a visit was one and three-quarter days. To generate additional revenue, we are raising our transient slip rating by one level from $47 a night to fifty-two, possibly generating an additional $4,650 at the thirty percent occupancy rate. Also, we are in the process of requesting approval to increase the number of allowed seasonal leases by eight to a total of eighteen. For our average thirty-eight-foot boat with successful promotion and marketing to fill all the seasonal slips, discounting what could be produced by transient fees at our present thirty percent occupancy rate, we could net an additional ninety-seven hundred bucks. Resvenues from the launch fees through September declined about five percent from the average of the previous two seasons. Interestingly, both the marina and the launches' best year was 2016, and I don't know, supposedly our economy's improving, so it must have been either a slowdown in the fishing or bad weather, but nonetheless, both of the marina and the launch facilities were affected. Repairs of the retaining wall structure at Arthur Street Launch were completed, and the collection tubers installed for launch fee collection, and the machine on Arthur Street Beach is refurbished and is operated satisfactorily. Some of the goals for us now, number one is working to increase revenues by promoting destination marketability, increasing the duration of transits layovers, and the promotion and marketing of seasonal and off-season rentals. The repair and replacement of the remaining docks, the development of the patio area, which is the area directly to the west of the marina building, which could be improved to make it more hospitable to the boaters and members of the community who needed a place to sit and snack or whatever. I would personally like to develop a better mutually productive relationship with other of the city's boards and commissions, since both parks and trees and everybody else, one way or another, is involved with the marina and could work to facilitate improving the situation as far as our revenues. On the same idea, soliciting and encouraging merchants' involvement in marketing and promotion, DDA, the River Street Group, the Chamber members, individual businesses, the Visitors Bureau, and so on, all have a stake in the community, as does the marina, and there should be mutually beneficial activities that they could work together to promote. Working to promote a program to allow the city's residents to daytime access to day docks when space is available. I feel a responsibility to the citizens, taxpayers, and the City of Manistee, who foot the bill for the deficit every year, one way or another, and I think they should be encouraged to utilize the marina whenever it's available for them, free of charge. So, if they've come off the lake at lunchtime, want to have a bite to eat, tie up to the marina, have their food, beverage, whatever, as long as we can make it accessible to transient boaters after they leave, that's fine, but I think it's very important, it'd be good public relations for the marina and for the city. Studying the feasibility of future developments, possibly day dockage on the north side of the channel, adjacent to the gazebo and Veterans Park, and permanent mooring locations in Manistee Lake, that's kind of a pipe dream. It would only become necessary if and when we constantly sell out the transient slips at the marina, and there's nowhere else where we can place these boaters. The north side of the channel, to me, is a fantasy I'd like to see realized. I thought we had a step toward that when the development of the Olson property was in way, and it would have made good sense at that time to develop the north side of the river, get rid of the old pilings that exist along there, and put in some dockage where visiting boaters can tie day, excuse me, day tie, go to the store, get fuel, go back out to the lake. And we have a master plan, which we'll review in January and make recommendations. That's what I have for you tonight. Any questions?
I just, I have a question, and thank you for your report, Mr. Cook. I appreciate everything that you said. The boathouse, which is right next to the marina, as you know, has had trouble, and they've been trying to sell it, and I think that's gone, may have gone back to the bank, I'm not sure where the process is right now. Have boaters that have come in said anything about, "Gosh, I wish that was open," or, "I wish there was a restaurant right next door that was open for breakfast?"
In previous years, yes. This year, less, because there are other things that have happened. The, call it the ambiance that boaters look for when they get off the boat is, number one, is a place to go eat and have a drink. And the closer they, that would be to the marina, the better it is for the marina. But not, setting that aside, what we have here to present to the boaters is still much more convenient than other places where they may go. So, it's, yes, it would be great if that was open and working, but it's not the end of the world, because, as I said, there are a number of places in town that are working now, and it's a, it's a shorter walk than it is in many, many places to get a food and drink.
Well, hopefully, that'll reopen sometime, and just be a bonus then.
Oh, absolutely. It would be.
Anybody else?
Well, I'd just like to say, you know, you can't have a port city without, without a great marina, and I think even with all of the problems, I think we've got a great start. A couple of questions, and again, maybe the legal side. Is it, you know, I know that we, we sell park benches, right? We have people put their names on a park bench. Would it be something that we could look at to actually have people in Dow adopt? I mean, there's probably a lot of, of people here who have, like I said, have spent a lot of time on the water and may like to kind of leave a legacy for themselves.
I think that we're working now with, it's been set aside because of that incident of the storm, but we're involved with this, with the patio area, and we have been given agreement from city attorney and council, I believe, that we can solicit private funding for the development of that area, and we're actively, going to be more actively involved in that once the repair of the dock is completed. But following that, once we get that, I think that when the time comes that we're looking for the money to repair the dockage that's not covered by the insurance, that would be a great idea, yes.
And then, and then the other thing, again, from the hospitality business, if you have slow periods, those are periods where you advertise promotional, and I'm not quite sure on how you would do that with, with dock space, but again, if perhaps sending out invitations to previous boaters, saying, you know, "Come in April and book two nights, and your third night is free," or that kind of, where you're, you're generating interest and revenue, and you're filling, you know, again, an empty dock doesn't, doesn't generate any revenues, so.
I agree with you totally, and I'm not sure how we are because of our contractual agreements with Waterways, who funded the construction of, limited to some extent by what we're allowed to do as far as giving away dock space and promotional stuff. We have tried that. I don't know, we were very successful. We were giving away a third night if, if they would come in for two nights, we'd give them the third night. I very much agree with you that the promotion of, of things like that in those early, and we do, the seasonals program now, we are giving rates for April and May differently for the whole season, so, not only because it makes sense to the fishermen, but also because the transient people don't really start showing up till late June, July, and August, so, but solves two problems at once, maybe. But yes, I agree with all of that you said.
And then the third piece is related to that. If we had commercial fishermen who were using, you know, and had permanent dock space, if, if we have any kind of ideas of how to bring them back, and again, maybe some kind of a, give them the last year's rate, or some kind of an invitation that would entice them, because the chances are, they've already found someplace else. So, it's hard for them to bring them back.
Well, part of, what we're doing, and we're going to be committed to be more active at it, the Facebook thing has grown, has more than doubled with the number of followers that are into the activities of the marina. Many of those are, have visited the marina. Some of them have never been here, but their friends have told them about it, they see the information and are interested in coming, and those are the people I think that we have to, most easily, least, less expensive to do that than it is any other thing. So, we're going to do that, but the, also, the, the commitment just to, to create instances where press releases can be constructed and placed to bring interest to the marina and word of mouth what it's all about. We don't have a, we don't have the mon, you know, any, I guess you could argue somewhere along, sooner or later, you're going to return on the money you can spend to develop, but there's no money there to start with, so that's the problem.
When is most desired to repair the dock?
Actually, I was just meeting with the engineers this afternoon. We've got plumery drawings that we just went through today. We plan on sending out the joint permit applications with the Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Quality tomorrow. Will be ready? So, let's have those signed and sent out tomorrow. I believe that we're far enough along in the design where, what we discussed today was going back to a couple area contractors and making sure that the costs of the materials are still in line with what the insurance company is willing to cover, touching base with the insurance adjuster, and making sure that we're still in line with them. If we're okay at that point, then they can continue to the final design stage. We'll take it to the Harbor Commission to review what those plans look like, and then the plan is to bid it out this winter and have construction early in the year with completion, I think it was, do you remember what our substantial was?
I just think it was the end of May, we had substantial, middle of May, and then filed the NPA.
So, we'll have substantial completion sometime in May, and then we'll, we'll certainly be, our target is to have it completely finished, contractor out of there before we hit those, that key hot season for them.
Good.
The other thing that I would mention is, and I brought this up, but even though we weren't successful with the Community Foundation, we still plan on making an application of the Waterways and trying to maximize that. Those are due April 15th, I believe, or April 1st. So, we'll be working at that, on that this winter. We'll go back and make another run at the foundation to see if we can actually reduce the requested amount. The insurance company was willing to cover one more dock than what we had made in our application, so that'll automatically reduce that, that amount down. The designs that we have right now are to pull all the pilings, all the docks that were damaged, there's eleven of them, replace them with new steel pilings, and then we were just refining the system on how we can actually raise and lower those dock sections so they match the water levels, because even when you've got a, a year where the gas prices are great, the weather's beautiful, the fishing's wonderful, if you can't get in and out of your boat very comfortably, that matters too, so.
I have something for you. I want to thank you for your years of service. I don't know how many years we go back, but I've been on the board for a long time, and we go back to before the marina, the new marina.
I'm too old to remember.
Right, and there's been many, many challenges through those years. You've always handled them very respectfully and professionally, and the City of Manistee does appreciate that, I'm sure, and I appreciate your continued effort for the marina. Thank you very much.
I've enjoyed working with you through the whole of yours also.
It's been enjoyable. The next thing is, and I should have probably done this sooner, but didn't, notification regarding next work session, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem Beaton asked to have it removed?
Yes. I wanted it taken off the consent agenda because I'd like to modify it, I'd like to make an addition to, to it.
So, do you have a motion?
Yes. I would like to add another item. I would like to add a discussion on the DDA and blight.
I have a motion to add the DDA and blight to the work session. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed? Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Concerns and comments, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, and areas of citizen involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read. Do we have any citizens' comments or concerns? Hearing none? Staff, Mr. Taylor?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Sale?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Our engineer?
That's me, Your Honor, unless you'd like to update.
I'll let you go tonight. DPW?
Public Safety, have anything? Public, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Uh, not at this time, but thank you for.
No.
Just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I'm glad to see they're gonna tear that whole stump, that'd be good, on Eleventh Street, that'd be great.
Councilwoman Pontiac?
That's what I was gonna say. You took it out of them?
I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your family, have fun, um, be safe. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.